And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in commonwealth.
All right, well, roll call. Eric Bosler here, David Boba here, Rick Rudolph here, Jim Kerschner here, Terrence McDaniel here, Gary Diesel here, Martha Reesinger here. Next on the agenda is the Board of Education norms, which are available if anyone wants to read them. I went over them a couple of meetings ago. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda of the October 7th, 2021 Special Board Meeting. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public input. The public input session will provide stakeholders with an opportunity to offer input on the modified quarantine guidelines. It is important to continue to share and note that we anticipate many updates to be made to the plan throughout the school year to reflect changing conditions in our community and recommendations from the CDC and DHSS. Each patron who wishes to speak during the public input session must fill out the attached public comment card. Hard copies will be available at the special board meeting. The completed card must be presented to Mr. David Boba, Board President, by 7:15. Each patron who presents a card will receive a maximum of five minutes to speak during the public input session. I have three cards. First up is Gary Grass. Oh, Dr. Fleeg, do you want to say anything first?
Um, I just was going to go through the modified quarantine real quick. That way, if anyone had any questions as they came and spoke about it, um, we could, I could address that when we move to the modified quarantine. So, the modified quarantine that we published with the other county schools, we met with our county health and a representative from each school. One school was absent, but called in and got a, got an update after the meeting, but was very much in favor of trying a modified quarantine. These guidelines that we developed are being used in Perry County, Jefferson County, and St. Francis County. I have spoken to many of the schools in those counties to see how it's going for them, and it seems to be working well. They do not have an increased number of cases in their community. They have very low positive cases in their school. There is one difference. They are allowing any student on quarantine to come to school. We are only going, we're taking a baby step. Those students identified as a close contact at school can come to school. When you're a close contact in your home or at a community event, we are going to require those individuals, those students, those adults, to go ahead and quarantine at home. So, I have been asked, we did, we forgot to put anything here, on here about the bus. The bus, the requirement for a mask on a bus is a CDC order, which pertains to public transportation. It was published on January 29th, and if you look at the CDC website, it specifically addresses the question of school buses and that they are required on buses. So, that cannot change. Um, I'm trying to think. The student must remain asymptomatic and continue to monitor for symptoms during the quarantine period if they attend school on this modified quarantine guidance. The students must, the student must comply, and wear a face mask, a face covering, a face shield will not be sufficient in this guidance. It has to be a mask. So, they will have to wear that anytime that they are not socially distanced. Anytime they're close to someone. We're going to do our best to make sure that hap, that they stay socially distanced. If a student is unable or unwilling to wear the mask, then he or she can stay home and quarantine at home. This is not requiring them to come to school. Lunch, we're going to look at designating an area because those students will have their mask off while they eat. There was some question about the Misha guidance. Nothing changes on the Misha guidance. It's exactly what we've been following, other than if they're a close contact, they can go to practice, but they're not allowed to practice. They're not allowed to be anywhere near the team. They can sit in the gym and watch with a mask on, but they cannot participate in a practice or a game. So, I think that's a quick rundown. Um, anything else, you think? Okay, that's a quick rundown. So, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Mr. Grass. Um, as you approach just the same rules we had last time, please speak into the microphone, please speak to the board, please speak politely. Mr. Bosler will have a timer. Everyone will be allowed five minutes.
All right. Just like the other times before, I'm glad I'm over here and not over there. And just to maybe reiterate, uh, what Mr. Klon had said at the last meeting, um, you know, the first part, a lot of reference to the Constitution. So, first part of the Constitution is, "We, the people of the United States, in the order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, and promote the general wel, welfare." That's what we're trying to do. Getting some opposition there. And it, it seems, after I read that, it's, it's turning into, it's every, everyone for themselves anymore. Every family, every individual for themselves, instead of everybody sticking together. I, I, you know. I, I don't get how, I just don't get how everybody, it's, the country can turn so selfish all of a sudden and not care about the person next to them anymore. And, and there's a, just this morning, my wife was making some breakfast for our son, and in making that breakfast, they, they do have it here at school, but every once in a while, he'll take his own. She made a peanut butter and jelly for him. As she put it in the container, she remembered, "Oh, there's a child in your class. You have a classmate that has a peanut allergy. We're going to have to do something different. You're going to have to eat this before you go to school." Why? Why couldn't she just send that? Well, it's because it could hurt that child, because we know it could hurt that child. It could kill that child. But we chose to make the set, well, if you want to call it a sacrifice, I don't care what you want to call it. We changed direction a little bit. Sorry, you're not going to take that into the class, you're going to have to eat it now, and then you'll just get whatever, you know, do whatever. Number one, we were looking out for the child, the other child. Number two, we just taught our son to help out others and to help protect others. So, there's more than, there's more than one lesson, there's more than one issue with the masks. And, and in, in the past, you know, there's, well, in the past, last week really, there's been a lot of scare tactics now thrown out, I guess, trying to scare the school board for the next election. Depending on how you vote and how you work this, depending on how you're going to get, what, how far you're going to go. And, and the petitions. I'm not here to do that. I'm not here to scare anybody. I'm just here to, to help. I'm here to worry about the kids. It just seems like social media is a good place to hide, but then, you know, then when you do come to the meeting, you don't show, you don't say anything, because you're person to person. And here is a map, just printed, from the Department of Health and Senior Services, and it shows the counties and the case, the cases. And this is statewide, and this is the last 14 days. Everybody's worried about what the counties around us are doing. Personally, I don't care what the counties around us are doing. It's time for, maybe, maybe we should be the leaders for a change. Bolinger County, that's not very far from us. They're fourth in the state. Iron County, not very far from us. Not a whole lot of people in Iron, I mean, there are, but it's more rural, sixth in the state. Perry County, right next to us, seventh in the state. Up north, Jefferson County, eleventh in the state. Cape Girardeau, which is a little bit farther south, sixteenth. St. Jen County is sixty-third. How come? I mean, that's a pretty good gap. We must be doing something right. My dad always said, as kids, "Why'd you do that?" Well, that's what they were doing. His response, everybody's heard it. If they go jump off a bridge, you're going to too. I wish, that comes up in different phases of, you know, life.
Thank you, Gary. Next, we have, next speaker is Philip Kwan.
Members of the board, good evening. Again, my name is Philip Kwan. I'm a parent of either current or future St. Genevieve students. Again, I would like to reiterate that my opinions are of my own and are not reflective of any organization which I represent. During the last meeting, I talked about two specific things. I talked about the science. I presented over 200 different scientific articles which supported masking. A lot of those articles, again, at the, the peer-reviewed PhD level or above, did touch on specifically schools. In addition to that, I discussed the constitutionality of masking and how no actions that the board has taken has violated anyone's constitutional rights. I'm not here to reiterate those points. Tonight, I'm here to talk about something else. I'm here to talk about community. Now, myself, you all, every individual in this room is here for the same reason, because we all care about the educational opportunities that our children can be presented with. We have a disagreement on how we can accomplish that. Now, in my time in this community, I've seen this community overcome a lot together. I've seen us overcome a multitude of different floods, individuals that are willing to walk the levee to check for damage, to fill hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of sandbags, and I assure you, it's not a fun job to do. I've seen this community come together when families have lost all of their belongings in fire. I have seen this community come together for those families in need when they've lost a family member to a very horrible disease, very, very recently, an individual that lives in my neighborhood. So, it perplexes me that this issue can become so divisive. How the choice to consciously protect another individual can divide us. So, often when we talk about that ability, that very American right of choice within our society, ingrained within our society. There are some individuals within this school, some children within this school, that life did not give them a choice. We, last meeting, heard testimony from two parents that specifically spoke about their children and their immunocompromised disorders. And they don't have a choice in that. Life didn't give them that choice. And so, as I spoke during the last meeting about our moral obligation to protect other individuals, for those children that don't have a choice, what choice are we giving them? We know that the best education that they could possibly receive is in this building. Dr. Fleeg, ma'am, during the last meeting, you spoke about the impacts of, of losing a student. When I was in second grade, I had a friend. Her name was Diana. She was the first individual in my life that I remember. I'm sure there were others that existed before, but she was the first individual in my life that didn't treat me different by the way that I appeared. Obviously, I'm an ethnic minority. Admittedly, I treated Diana a little bit different because I was curious about her. Diana wore hearing aids. Diana had extremely short hair for a girl, and those things were curious to me. What I didn't know was that Diana had leukemia. And we were in first grade together. When we went to second grade, our first grade teacher became a second grade teacher. Admittedly, I was very upset that I didn't have Mrs. Lewis two years in a row, but Diana was the only student that did. But she didn't come to school a lot that year, because ultimately, she passed away. Now, I remember sitting at my kitchen table, talking to my mom, and she asked me, "Hey, do you want to go to the funeral, Philip?" And I told her, "No." And the reality was, it wasn't because I didn't care. At that point in my life, I had never lost someone close to me. I had never lost someone that I knew. And I was scared of seeing my friend like that. Now, obviously, circumstances then were different than they are now. And today, we have the ability to make a choice, again, all of us as a community, to come together and to protect those that cannot protect themselves, to look out for our fellow human beings. We are all Americans. We are all members of the same community without adjectives, without adjectives meaning without being pro-mask or anti-mask or Republican or Democrat or left or right or Christian, Muslim, Hindu, whatever those things are. We're all a member of the same community, and I believe it is incumbent of ourselves to consider that, that as we look at our neighbors, the people in this room, again, we're all here for the same thing. If we can just work together, that'll be the way that we can get through this. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker, uh, the final speaker is Megan Daniels.
Hi. I don't have anything formal written down. Uh, I'm Megan Daniels. You know my stance on the efficacy of masks as well as the risks regarding COVID-19. But, uh, the last few weeks, we have all watched as world and national leaders have been caught in lies and deceit regarding the origin of COVID-19, vaccination efficacy, masking efficacy. We don't, I don't know why they did this. Is it money? Is it power? Tonight, I'm just asking you to take a second look at who you're receiving, um, your statistics from, who you're receiving your research from, the leaders that you are looking to. Just take a second look, and also, I'm pleading with you, just to take an inward look at why, why, truly why are you making the decisions you're making? Is it for the health of our kids? Is it for some other reason? I'm just pleading with you to please take a second look at all this. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the modified quarantine guidance for students. Dr. Fleeg or Dr. Taylor, did you have anything additional to add?
Um, I don't either. You know, we, the face coverings are put in place to keep kids in school. Modified quarantine is another way to do that, because we know the best place for kids to learn is in school, both for emotional, well, emotional, social, all of it. So, the, uh, the numbers in our county are low. We currently have two positive cases within our district. We actually have 20, I'm looking at the dashboard now, 20 quarantines. But again, a lot of those quarantines are from home or outside of our buildings. If we are going to try a modified quarantine, I feel like now is a good time to try it. The other county schools will be implementing it on Monday, for sure, so.
So, of the quarantines, two of those are the positives.
Correct.
So, the other 18, if they were a close contact here at school, instead of being at home, they could be here at school.
And this morning, when I looked at the quarantine numbers, there were 11. So, that leads, and we had the two positives, so that leads me to believe that the eight or nine, because I think it was 11, it might have been 12, that were added today are from home or outside.
Are there some more questions or any comments from the board?
I just have a comment. Uh, so you're, so you're saying that the masks from the last time you met helped bring this down?
The number of quarantines, I, I do believe that, yes.
Well, I just might add something. Somebody out my number who wrote, I started writing down, I didn't understand those. I can't talk for the rest of the board, but I will tell you one thing. There's nobody, nobody in this county, school district, or anywhere that can tell me how to vote. Anytime I make my decision, it's how I deeply feel about these kids. These kids are our top priority. So, if we do something to make, I'm not going to make you mad, or I'm going to make you happy, or vice versa, we're going to make somebody mad. But just know that, I, I, again, I can't talk for the board, but I can honestly say that when I make my decisions, it's truly for the kids.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on the modified quarantine guidance? No?
Oh, wait a minute, one more. So, just say that whatever the outcome is, or that we do vote for the modified. Now, we, are we going to continue to do this by monthly meetings?
Yes. Uh, I think that's part of the motion, that you will review and evaluate it at your regular month, your regular meeting, or at the next regular meeting is what it says.
Anyone else have anything other questions? I would entertain a motion if anyone wishes to make one.
I'll motion to approve the implementation of the modified quarantine guidance for the students on Monday, October 11th, 2021. This decision will be reviewed and discussed at the next regular open meeting.
Hold on a second.
Got that? I have a motion and a second. We will do a roll call. David Boba, yes. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Jerelyn Diesel?
Yes.
James Kerschner?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph?
Yes.
Terrence McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Next thing on the agenda is the face covering mandate. Dr. Fleeg, Dr. Taylor?
Um, my recommendation would be, since we're moving to a modified quarantine at this time, to transition back to strongly encouraging face coverings on Monday. That would give us two weeks to look at the modified quarantine, to monitor, monitor the, the number of positive cases in our community and our school district. Our next meeting is October 19th, so I would want to reevaluate that on October 19th.
Questions or comments for administration?
Do you think it needs to do this? If we take one step at a time? You know, I, I don't say much at these meetings, because I do, I'm prepared when I come here. But the reason why, in my opinion, that we're where we're at is because of these right here. I don't like them. But I think it might be the best thing for us, in my opinion, to try this modified quarantine and then review the masks mandate at the regular board meeting, which is two weeks away. That'll give us a little time to get some, uh, numbers together and see what's going on. Because sometimes, when you try to fix something and you do too many things at one time, you don't know what you did right. Would I like to do away with them? Oh, yeah. But the facts are, I think we should try one step at a time. Is it, if we, if we change, I mean, the modified quarantine, does it make sense to do the modified quarantine in masks, or is, we're kind of doing the same thing already with masks and just the way we're quarantining kids?
Um, I, I don't know that I really have an answer for that, because we've not tried, I mean, we've had the mask, and from the numbers, it seems that they're working to keep our quarantine numbers low, um, but we've not tried the modified quarantine guidance. So, I don't know that I can really answer that.
The way we're quarantining kids now is completely different than, than this.
The way that kids are getting quarantined now is, is they're not properly wearing the mask when they come in close contact for, for the 15 minutes for someone who's positive.
Yeah.
Or it's, the trend, the contact is outside of school. I do know the cafeteria is an area where most of the quarantines come from, because, you know, you're sitting with someone, and in the middle school, high school, we don't have plexiglass barriers in both elementaries. They're socially distanced, or there is plexiglass now at St. Jen.
I mean, I, I agree. I, I think masks obviously work to help. They, they curtailed, who know, we'll, we'll never know, because you don't know how many people it didn't get sick and it's safe. But when, when I'm up at school, these kids do not wear these masks the right way at all.
They don't wear them on a football field either, right? Or anywhere else. I mean, football.
Hey, please, no, not that, thank you.
And, so.
Then you should have put a comment card down.
And they're, but kids can still wear masks. We're, we're encouraging it, so if, if the kids want to wear masks, wear masks.
Yes.
We'll never take that away.
And we've worked with quite a few parents and kids who want to get outside that six feet, so, you know, it's conversations they have with their teachers. So, they're moving themselves, you know, sometimes they sit on the floor, sometimes they sit further away from their peers, but there are kids making those decisions. Not all of them, but some.
And this would be something else we would reconsider in two weeks if we were to change it? Other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion if anyone wants to make one. You know, I, I will add a comment. I'm going to try to stay off my soapbox. And I respect everyone's opinion, everyone. If you think that these group of individuals aren't looking inward on a regular basis, you're sorely mistaken. Do some people believe some politics of the situation, and some people believe other politics? Absolutely. But the politics is not involved in this decision. If you think it is, you're wrong. It's a tough, tough decision. It shouldn't be. We should be up here talking about MAP scores and what we can do to improve them, what we can do to improve class sizes, and what we can do to grow our district academically, extracurricularly, how we can feed more kids to come up here, how we can maybe provide medical care for them. But instead, we have three meetings about these topics, and they're important. I just want to be clear, everyone up here is deeply involved in this decision.
And once, all the schools with the, uh, modified quarantine, the masks are encouraged, but not mandatory?
Correct. Correct.
Hi, attorney. Hey. I started teaching in 1971. The reason I started teaching, I wanted to educate kids, teach kids. When I went to Plumdale as a principal, I wanted to help kids. That was my goal, to help kids, educate kids. When I got on the school board, and by the way, it's a non-paying job, folks, it's a freebie, it's a freebie. Some people don't agree, don't understand that, but it's a freebie. When I got on the school board, it was to do what I could with other people, working with other people, to help educate students and kids. Provide it for a quality education, and in the best interest of those students, and to protect our staff too. You know, provide what we can for them. But sometimes people forget where we come from. That's me. I want to help kids, I want to educate kids, and I want them here in school, educate them. If anybody's got any questions about that, I'm, I'm ready.
Terry, I'm in the school system, and I appreciate that. What we're doing to these kids, anybody?
Well, it's a modern, hey.
Well, it is if they got bad problems. It is if they're stressed, we can't do anything about it. We don't have a choice to keep our kid at home. We don't start a education because you don't want to wear a mask?
Okay, okay.
Let your kid wear a mask.
Other comments or questions from the board members?
No.
Nope? Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to amend the face covering mandate and transition to strongly encouraging face coverings on Monday, October 11th, 2021, for all students and employees on the campuses of the St. Genevieve County R2 School District during school hours. Visitors to these campuses during school hours, school hours will continue to be required to wear face coverings. This decision will be reviewed and discussed at the next regular open meeting.
Can I ask, can I ask another question? So when we, when we started this school year without any mask mandate, what, how was our numbers then? Better, worse than we are today?
When we started the school, as a county as a whole, I don't think we were in a great place, but when we, when we met and I recommended that we implement the face covering as a county, we were at, we had high numbers. We were in a much worse place than we are right now. So having said that, should the county numbers go up, should we see numbers go up in our building, I'm gonna come back and recommend that we put them back in place.
We could throw a meeting together, and, just like we did when, just tonight, within a, well, how many, 48 hours notice or something, or?
By law, you're required to give 24 hours notice before you hold the board meeting. Meeting tonight is more to make sure that the county schools that we worked with are able to move forward. We were able to put the, you know, the information out and get them on a track to begin on Monday.
I have a question for Dr. Flee. Dr. Taylor, Dr. Flee, when you met with the other local county schools, did they share any numbers with you about, because they have not been masking, correct?
Correct.
Did they share any numbers with you about their COVID cases or quarantine numbers?
They did not, the only thing they said were that their numbers were low.
Okay, thank you.
So, we had a motion in a second. To, I want to just go over it, and by the way, all the motions are scripted, we do not have to follow those motions. The motion was to amend the face covering mandate and transition to strongly encouraging face coverings on Monday, October 11th, 2021, for all students and employees on the campus of St. Genevieve County R2 School District during school hours. Visitors to these campuses during school hours will continue to be required to wear face coverings. The decision will be reviewed and discussed at the next regular open meeting. Correct, Ms. Riesinger?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
After school hours, it's all during school hours right now, correct?
It's during school hours right now also, yes, sir.
And after school hours, it's not, right?
Correct.
Sometimes those people just don't understand that.
Correct. Any other comment? I have a motion in a second on the table, we'll do a roll call vote. David Bova? Yes. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Jerry Diesel?
Yes.
James Kirshner? I'm sorry? Martha Riesinger?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
I'm sorry that I'm having trouble hearing. Richard Rudolph?
No.
Terrence McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn a special board meeting of the Board of Education in St. Genevieve County R2 School District in St. Genevieve, Missouri.
Sir.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.